So well.
I'd also like to say that in my years in Brookline, of course, I've, I voted in the past overrides and having spent the time that I have with the 2014 report, I now realize that I was voting on just pure heart, on what I just thought was right and had no sense of all of the issues involved with the meaning of my vote. And I would like to do better this time and I will do better whether I, you know, whether I'm on the committee or not, but I would certainly hope that we will find a way to help the citizens of Brookline become more involved and better informed about the repercussions of that vote.
I see that you have an educational, is it a doctorate?
Yeah, I'm a, I have a doctorate in education, yes.
Yes. So, that kind of perspective for this kind of purpose, a lot of the override tends to be very school and school program specific. Would you be able to understand some of the stuff that the school committee puts forward and help the rest of the study committee understand like how that translates into dollars?
I think so. A good part of my work in higher education, I was at the Boston University School of Medicine for 25 years before becoming the vice president at the Association of American Medical Colleges, Washington DC. And one of my areas was student finance and my doctoral dissertation was the development of a student financial planning model for the highest cost institution of higher learning in America. And at that time, it was the Boston University School of Medicine. I've also done a great deal of work on the board at Colby College. And at Colby College, you know, we are on time and on budget institution and I've worked deeply with the vice president of finance around all of the issues of that institution. So, you know, I'd have a learning curve, but I think I could do well.
Excellent.
I was just gonna ask you, following up on select woman's, Hamilton's question, to sort of give us some understanding of how your background, not in finance, but in education, and we're talking about schools anyway, would provide an important contribution to the committee. I think you've answered that, but if you want to elaborate some more.
It may be perspective. I believe deeply in education, which is why I provide free advising to all comers. And I'm very, very proud of what Brookline does with its, with its school system. And although I have not had my own children in the system, I believe that in this country, until we begin to take the responsibility for educating all of our children, then we are still going to be faced with some of the issues that we are faced with now. My godchildren, two extraordinarily wonderful African-American young men, went through the Brookline Public School System. And both they, their parents and I talk about how incredibly valuable that experience was for them and I think how valuable they were for the Brookline Public Schools. And I think education has been the cornerstone of my life and I think I will bring perspective and the ability to listen, to learn, and to try to appreciate the balances that we will need to achieve between continued school excellence and town services and the ability, particularly for the lower income and the elderly, to be able to afford and renters to remain in our town.
Okay, so I'll follow up on select person Green's question. So it appears that you've had a very successful career in the educational arena and I'm wondering whether you have any familiarity at all with municipal finance and town services as you have just?
Not directly, no.
But I can attest, since we worked on the Town Meeting Members Association together, that Charles is an excellent listener.
Well, what I've tried to do in my year and a quarter as a town meeting member, I'm generally pretty outspoken, is that I've tried to remain very quiet, to learn, to listen, to meet people and to moderate some of the opinions that I tend to walk into the door with. So you've not heard very much from me because I think I've been fairly successful with doing that.
Okay, so thank you very much for applying. I think we'll be making decisions in the next week or two.
Thank you very much.
Week.
Next week?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Is it October already?
It's like my Franco bang the table.
For dramatic effect.
It's gonna be next week. Is Ariel Soifer here? Mr. Soifer, did I, did I mangle your name?
A little bit. You won't be the first or the last. Ariel is great.
Okay, tell me, how do you pronounce your last name?
Soifer, so that was fine.
Soifer, that wasn't too bad.
No, not at all.
Okay, tell us about yourself and what brings you here.
So I am a lawyer at Wilmer Hill, formerly Hill and Door downtown. My focus is on tech transactions. In a prior life, I was a management consultant focusing on financial modeling, data analytics. What brings me here today is I think that I have, you know, the right kind of both financial and legal analytical abilities. I obviously couldn't act as a lawyer in this role, but I-
We wouldn't expect you to.
Right. But I have, I think, the right kind of analytical abilities to contribute to the override study committee and to think about the issues here. I think I have, you know, a good background to help out here and I'm happy to do so. I've previously been on a couple of town committees several years ago and I'm hoping to start to get back involved.
So which committees were you on?
I was involved in the wireless committee, excuse me, when we first deployed townwide wifi, which maybe was a decade ago or so, and the IT advisory committee-
It was a good idea.
Yeah, you know.
For its time.
For its time, yes. And, you know, and separately, I was on the IT advisory committee for a few years after that as well.
Questions?
So I see that you have extensive financial modeling experience. Can you elaborate on what that is and how it might benefit this type of committee?
Sure. So I've built financial models for Fortune 500 companies. It's been a few years, but I have done that. And some of that was things like trying to figure out how to calculate your revenues, how to forecast what the revenues would be for the next five years or 10 years, and what are the right ways to build that financial model to account for different assumptions, how to, how to run different kinds of models to say, well, let's say this assumption varies by 5%, 10%, what is the impact on the revenues or the, you know, overall balance sheet for the firm? Those are the kinds of things I've done. I think it's fairly obvious how that would apply to the goals here, but I can, I'm happy to elaborate on it if, you know, if that's helpful.
Well, so let's say you see a financial model. Would you be able to ask questions about the underlying assumptions?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I'm very comfortable doing that and, you know, that's what I used to do in my old life. So I'm a little rusty, but I think I could pick that up again.
It's like riding a bicycle.
I think so. And, you know, I think that that's something that we're all trained to do as part of financial modeling, to think about the assumptions, to think about how they might vary and what the impact might be. That's typically, I mean, you know you have to make assumptions whenever you're making a model, so then the idea is, well, what happens if those assumptions are wrong? And you hope that they're within a narrow band of your initial assumption, but they're not always.
Talk to us about how you would convey that to other members of the committee, making sure that they appreciate both the values as well as the potential risk of using financial models in a particular situation.
Sure. So that was something that we did in my old job as well. Sometimes we use PowerPoint presentations, which aren't always viewed in the highest light. But one of, one of the things that I tried to become an expert in, and I think I reasonably succeeded, was translating things from what I would call statistician ease to, you know, English and trying to get things into relatively simple English. And I think that that's the sort of thing that would apply here. So for example, you might say, well, okay, if, if we vary this assumption by plus 10% or minus 10%, then the bottom line impact on, you know, the town's revenues or something will be X. And then you could have a simple chart that just says, you know, here's what it'll be for each of these assumptions. And just by looking at the magnitude of those bars, you'd have a pretty reasonable understanding of, well, here are the levers that matter. It's the sort of thing I've done before. It's the sort of thing I think I could do here.
So I want to ask you about something you wrote in your application. And it's a sentence that I could read a couple of different ways, so I want you to expand upon the thought process. You say, "One of the issues that you'd like the board to address is minimizing impacts on town residents." What did you mean by that?
Yeah, well, I think one of the concerns, not just for current town residents, but also future town residents, is what the overall picture here is. I think Brookline, for better or for worse, has become really upper-middle class and upper class, and it's harder and harder, I think, for middle-class and non, not even middle-class folks to live in this town. And I think we need to think about that and is that something we want? And are there any things that we can do through this process to manage that, to try to make Brookline a town that is accessible for everyone, which includes, I think, accessibility to what I'd consider a world-class school system where, you know, I'm happy to have my kids attend as well.
So is that a financial statement or programmatic statement or a combination of both?
I would think of it more financial, I suppose, but I guess you could think about it as both to a lesser degree.
Yeah, one of the things you'll discover as you, as you get into this is we have a big box drawn around what we can do, especially in the world of taxation. And for better or worse, the property tax is kind of where the action is and we can't do things like, it's been suggested by some, things like a transfer tax or even an income tax. If you live in New York City, you pay a city income tax. Or in Philadelphia, I see you were a Penn grad, a fellow Penn grad. Philly has a wage tax. We can't do that. So property tax is kind of where it is, so we can hopefully search for non-tax revenue, but we're even there, we're kind of limited. You know, there's only so much you can raise the parking meters.
Right. I mean, if we made them $1,000 an hour, I'm assuming not too many folks could park in Brookline.
Yeah, we-
Only the Tesla drivers.
That's right.
Any?
Go ahead. I see that you taught an alternative dispute resolution class. What did that entail and would that be some, some sort of skill set that might be appropriate for this setting?
I'm angry.
I thought we were getting along, Heather.
So, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that I have any alternative dispute resolution skills, but, you know, but I'd like to think that I do, as I think many lawyers like to think that they do. A lot of times, you know, that's, that's our job. We both, we try to bring our clients closer to the other side, especially, I'm a corporate lawyer, so I'm doing transactions. We try to bring our clients closer to the other side and the other side closer to us and hopefully we find a middle ground where we can all be reasonably unhappy. In, you know, the specific question, the ADR class, I was asked by one of my professors to teach a couple of, I think it was over maybe two or three years, to teach one class each time and just help her out with that class. And, you know, I don't know that the actual teaching there helped, but the, when I was in law school, we won the national negotiation competition and I was asked to teach about that negotiation competition, a scenario that we had there. And there were specifically some ethical issues that were raised by that scenario. And so, you know, I spoke with the class about legal ethics. I know it's surprising, but they exist. And we were asked to try to find, you know, comments and ways to help the students think about those legal ethical issues, how to negotiate successfully, how to drive a good bargain, but at the same time, how to be consistent with our requirements as lawyers.
We're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
One last question.
Okay.
Settlers of Catan.
Yes.
Do you call it rock or do you call it or?
I do call it or. And I understand that game is now called Catan, but I, but I still refuse and I use the old name.
Thank you.
I won't even ask what that was.
It's a generational.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
I recommend-
Boy, I am.
I recommend-
I'm an old fogey, my God. Thank you. Okay. Mr. DePietro. DePetro.
You can go your way. I think I probably pronounce it wrong, but-
How do you pronounce it?
I pronounce it DePetro.
Oh, I had it right.
Yeah, I think that a lot of people-
You're getting the last names.
Yeah. So tell us about yourself and what brings you here.
Sure. So I live in, in Brookline on Still Street, which is precinct two, I believe. I've been here for about five years. My wife and I moved here after we got married. And, you know, we really love Brookline. I think it's probably, you know, probably the best town to live in in Massachusetts. And I'm sure you all probably feel similarly.
But we're biased.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, I've been looking for a way to get involved for a while now. I got a little bit sidetracked with, you know, having two, two young children, but kind of coming out of the weeds and I saw this opportunity to, to get involved. And it's, it's pretty interesting because it, it marries my professional life with my personal sort of cares. You know, I mean, I care, I care deeply about the school system and, you know, also taxes and I understand the interplay there. And professionally, I work in investment and specifically real estate investment. So I have a pretty strong analytical background, which I think will, you know, pair nicely with this role and in a bunch of ways, you know, specifically from an analytical perspective of financial statements and how the town's budget operates, but, but also from a real estate perspective, you know, being able to look at, you know, how buildings operate and how, how, you know, being able to look deeper into certain line items of, of the budget. So I'm looking forward to, you know, hopefully participating, being an active contributor on this committee.
So I'm curious as to whether you've had any experience with municipal budgets?
So no, I haven't had any experience with municipal budgets, but I've had a experience with a fairly broad range of budgets. You know, when my role is to go out and acquire real estate for my firm and every piece of real estate is different, every seller is different and you'd be surprised at how different their operating budgets are from a revenue perspective and from an expense perspective. And I have a pretty good understanding of that. I also am involved with a nonprofit called the Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, where I, I'm on the budget committee and involved in, you know, a nonprofit's budget as well.
What are abstracted leases?
So, by the way, I didn't edit my own professional resume at all before sending it over here, but, but it's basically just, you know, you take a, you take a lease, which is a legal document by which somebody occupies space and pays rent and dictates all the roles and responsibilities. And one of my, one of the things I've done in the past, I don't do as much of anymore, but, is to read those documents and pull out the important terms that matter when you're considering making an investment in real estate.
Ooh, interesting. How do you learn how to do that?
You know, I, so I studied it in school, but then I, you know, I learned, I learned a lot on the job. And it's, you know, it takes a lot of, a lot of hours of grinding.
Okay.
Ooh.
Go right ahead.
Underwriting and valuation. Can you elaborate as to what that is?
Sure. I'm sorry, where, where are you?
It is the very last line in your-
Skill section.
Yes. Oh, it's knowledgeable in real estate underwriting and valuation.
Yeah, okay, got it. So that's just, you know, simply the, the understanding of how you calculate your, your revenues and your expenses and come down to a net operating income and then figure out what you think you're gonna pay for a piece of real estate and why, and then kind of what the drivers are behind your assumptions and, you know, figuring out how good it could get or how bad it could get based on the different variables.
I spoke to Mr. DePietro on the phone prior to tonight, so I've had a number of my questions answered, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Ooh, can, you mentioned ARGUS and Excel. Is ARGUS more like access database?
It is an access database of sorts, but it's a little more polished than that and designed specifically for real estate valuation. And Excel, I'm sure you know what Excel is.
Yeah.
So those are just sort of financial related skills.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be making selections next week and we'll see what happens.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you for applying. And Ms. DeWitt, we, we've seen you before.
Good evening, everybody. I think you are all people now, is that right?
We were people before.
I started trying to track that.
We were all men prior, right?
I was never-
She's not touching that one.
Anyway, I'm here in part because I horrified to realize I've been involved in every single of the town's overrides, going back to 1994. And that was when I was chair of the advisory committee and that was the first one we passed in Brookline after the statute, which was passed in 1980. So I have a little, even taken aback myself by how many years I have had things to do with overrides. But the real reason I'm here is that I was involved more recently. I mean, I was chair of the advisory committee in the night, when the 1994 override was being reviewed and prepared. And I was involved in the process there as a member of the advisory committee. For the 2008 override, I was involved along with Chair Wyszynski in a process that was establishing the parameters of the override. And then for 2015 override, I had a role as co-chair of the B-Space Committee, where Chair Wyszynski also served. And-
Such, such memories.
So unfortunately, and I'm not saying this with prejudice, but I realized I had a lot more to do with overrides than I had originally even thought about. And I know they're terribly important and I don't think the town undertakes them lightly. I think we need to do the same sort of review process that we've done in the past and we have good models. I guess my feeling now is we've been in a situation where we have accumulated knowledge and information and therefore we can build on all of these prior studies. But I do think each one requires the same level of fact gathering and analysis and fiscal due diligence with regard to all of the way operations in the town and also whatever we're contemplating. I know full well that the override in 2008 in part was driven by anticipated sort of changes in the community. The 2015 one was definitely being driven by enrollment increases. And we're now seeing another change with real estate development that may also have a future impact on enrollment. I'm not quite sure where all that fits in, but I know that we need to look very carefully at where the drivers are and how we can be best prepared, both for proper, responsible operating facility, I mean, being in a position to have our operations well organized and efficient. And if there are places where we can make savings because of increased technology or some other changes that had not been around at the prior, under consideration previously, all of those things are new and things that we must deal with. And then come up with some kind of recommendation based on our best ability to analyze the facts that are available to us, so. Big task and not very much time, as I understand it.
Right, yeah, we're looking at-
I will ask my, my usual question. I assume you've had some municipal finance experience?
I have reviewed a budget or two, yes. I have, I think, good background. I am not, I will, I will give this as an absolute flat. I don't, I don't, I don't calculate, I'm not a financial person. I rely on other people's, but I have enough experience to know how to ask pointed questions and to help under-
I'll affirm that.
Okay. And, and try to help people understand what the professional data analysis means and why we have to come to certain recommendations and conclusions based on it. But I count on my fingers and I use a calculator.
I'm gonna ask you a leading question and if I admit it's a leading question, it's okay. You, in your, there's a lot of angst about this, this override-
Yes.
And the potential size of it and the number of asks that are gonna be going to the voters in quick succession. I notice on your professional experiences that you are a director of the community foundation. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that role and anything that you think that experience brings to your, your participation on past override study committees and potentially as future ones?
Well, I guess what I would say is that my community foundation experience and also my affordable housing experience, I can underline previous comments about the fact that our community's now suffering from a wealth gap and I don't know how we address that. I think we have an obligation to the children who come to our schools. And my impression is now that it's becoming increasingly expensive for the parents of those children to live here. And it seems to me we, we are going to have to struggle to balance these various interests. Having said that, I also think that to the extent that we undertake an override, in part if it's to be for expansion of the high school, for example, we have to justify every penny we spend. In that case, as a debt exclusion, at least one can imagine the impact is less significant than for operating overrides, which will have a much more immediate impact. On the other hand, I know in the past, when we've looked at these calculations, we've tried to provide an incremental impact so that the effect of it is somewhat mitigated. Having said all of that, the answer is, if we're gonna raise this kind of money and we're not talking small bucks, we're talking big bucks, no matter how, it will continue to be, it will, it will make it more difficult for families who would like to live in Brookline to live here because it'll have those consequences. And I, all I can say is that I think we should mitigate them to the best of our ability and have more affordable housing.
Let me, I want to ask a question, but I first want to just make a observation that you were born in the same town I was born in, Columbia, South Carolina.
Yes, how about that?
I have, okay, so, anyway-
I did marry a Midwesterner and I kind of got groomed out of my accent, though.
And you were also in Philadelphia during the time I was in high school.
Oh, really?
If you, if you remember anything about what I was doing, don't tell.
Okay, I was not.
But anyway.
It was a great place, it was a good place to be then, though, I will have to say.
It was a great place for, for a young kid like me.
I thought you spent all your time in the library for an art.
This is the Frank Rizzo years?
Yeah, it was.
Just, just before, I was there just, well, over into, but just before Rizzo, but yeah, right.
So separate from your experience on prior override committees and separate from all your financial expertise, blah, 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 give me a sense of how your experience as a member of the Board of Select whatevers will play into this override study committee? Now, I'm thinking in terms of the committee's gonna report to the board, but also must convince the board. So, you know, what, what do you bring from that experience? So, you know, what do you bring from that experience?
Well, perhaps I can at least provide what I know to be some, and I believe Selectman Wiszynski mentioned this, some of the limitations on what the Board of Selectmen can and cannot do. I think the good news is that we have a board that can make difficult decisions. But in order to make those decisions, what I would have looked for and hope that you too will look for is a balanced presentation of the facts and information that you need in order to be able to make the best decision. And I could imagine even that you might not in the end feel it was a perfect one, but it has to be the best you can, given the facts and under the circumstances. And it would be my hope that the way the committee works is that it provides with the best, it provides the members with the best tools to make that final determination.
One question. From your vast experience, having worked on overrides, the thing that stuck out for me was that you had chaired the school's subcommittee when you were on the advisory committee. So I can only imagine the interplay between the schools and the advisory committee. Can you elaborate on what that experience was like and how that experience might help the override study committee this time around?
Well, it's just a matter of understanding somewhat the way the school department operates independently, as a system within a system, so to speak. I will also have to say that it's been a long time since I did that, but I have also worked collaboratively with school committee members, including Ms. Heller, from time to time. And my feeling is that there's got to be a fair balance. I don't always necessarily believe the school committee, I may try it differently. The school committee is driven by a set of criteria that might be different compared to people who are trying to make a financial decision about things. And so it's really important to find out all of the information and to sort of push hard to be sure that it's needs and not wants that we're talking about. And I think particularly this time, it may have been less critical at other times, but right now I really do believe that's very, very important, so.
Thank you.
And I think our schools are important, you know, they're, they support our tax base. It's weird, but that's part of the whole thing here.
And we have so little commercial base.
Right.
I mean, when people compare us to Cambridge, it's really not an apples-to-apples.
No, not at all.
Because they're so, so different.
Twenty percent to eighty percent, you know.
They have so much commercial property and it seem like they're building more things all the time, so.
Correct.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay.
So I think next week, with the Selectman Franco banging the table, is when we'll be doing this.
I gather he's anxious to get started, is that...
I've got my eye on the reporting deadline and...
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, we noticed a public hearing for 8:15, and while it says approximate, I'm gonna suggest we take a 10-minute recess so we can refresh ourselves.
Okay, we're voting on this. I think we're usually happy to have these things in the middle. So you do that for the...
Me too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I guess when we start up again. Okay. You went through all the...
I'm sorry, for some reason I have a memory. I don't know why.
So, yeah, so the President of the College sent out a, he went a little...
Didn't waste any time, did he?
Yeah.
Straight to the town.
Oh, yeah, nice call. Yeah, I saw you. Yeah, so, it was obviously rare, but I think the kind of overstated case.
And we're used, I suppose, with S's, which is a little different from the original taking.
Right, the required, and of course...
From his perspective, it wasn't free.
Right. So, you know, they were...
Rides are up.
Right, so, what was interesting is, so, as soon as that one happened, I was gonna wait until we were gonna make our statement tonight here, and then we were going to send it out to the town meeting members and Facebook, press, all that. So as soon as he sent out his thing, I'm thinking, okay, I gotta get the word out before the train starts rolling here. So I immediately sent it out.
So he sent something out earlier today?
Yeah.
Yeah. Check your...
Well, I just think it needs my own notice.
Right. Well, he told Mel and I.
Yeah, I know you did, so I'm sure Mel was...
So, and so we knew that he was... As I've described it, if looks could kill, I'd be dead.
You know, it's interesting to me that he's taking on such an aggressive, what do you say, you know, response, given that I'm not sure that I would use...
Who?
You guys.
Hello? Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Bye. I just said...
But it does suggest... This is...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest... This is...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of... I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest... This is...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of... I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of... I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of... I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of...
Yeah.
I'm seeing people's social media, so...
But it does suggest...
Yeah, it's really social media experience. I think that's a lot of... And then if someone wanted to build a, say, a building and a dirty apartment over the garage, they could take this, if we want, uh, we'll take fourteen of them and we'll build a fourteen story giant bar complex.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Why not level three?
Anyway, and that, that decision would have been the discretion of the selectmen. Okay, to put them anywhere in town and they, the selectmen have the authority to move that. It's not the same, whatever is on. Because the legislative changes the rule there, now it's, well, why even, the selectmen have less authority than they had before. But everybody will be, will be chilling out saying, look at this guy. The economic development.
Right, right, which may make other people feel, you know, when they're, when they're equal, why don't they get the same destination? So I, I understand.
Where are you typing?
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah. But you realize the flip side of this is because it's, no. The only way a restaurant is huge in town, like it will be discouraged as well because the one way a new restaurant may be.
My kids.
And you have, you need to be able to serve up a, you know, a successful restaurant. So I don't know what the state is about it. I don't understand what you mean. I mean, Boston is not near.
And in particular, because there are only these certain executives in there. There's very little.
Yeah, right. Well, this is not one that Amazon is going to take away from it. But on the other hand, you want to be able to have local businesses. And if that's what is required, then we must have.
I had, I had a conversation that's been, but I'm still getting here. I had the internet boom when I sat down with John and Andrew and I said, I said, well, won't concede you. He said, well, you live in town. I said, no, come on, barbershop.com, dude. He says, yeah, that's.
But, no, it's, um, it's the way the state's handled it. I, I think we're crossing them there. And I don't know how it is that maybe it's part of the difference to the more rural part of the state, people really don't want. No, I haven't get it. I, I'm aware of the city of Boston gets, gets, as many as we want, we're like, everything, we're like, what's the street? I mean, that's probably the local, not really do something, but I, I don't think we're talking about it. Up now one, but not now one, then like the house, we could, we could, oh, right.
So if you have, so let's say you said, okay, well, we're gonna put seven of them in this, you know, this neighborhood. Four of them over here and then you've got five of them in the one that had seven, but you've got all four filled. Can you move one? Can you go to the, say, we want one?
You'd either find it at large places.
Yeah.
With restaurants, but there's.
You can sort of, yeah, you can do a kind of, um, what's the word, swap, that's not the right word. Swap, maybe, yeah. We agree, somebody who wants or has a local geographic base point could swap with somebody that has a non-geographic base point.
So they're, so they're granting a certain percentage that are non-geographic based? Or is that a grandfather?
The ones that, the cards, obviously, the whole system.
Yes.
It's based on population with no geographic time.
Yeah.
In order to increase. What is it? Now. Not exactly. Legislation, they have to be certain, in effect, economic development connected. Correct. And so if there's going to be a new, you know, property development, including several, you could request licenses for that. Instead of. Exorcement. You have to include street address. So it means, um, possible locations at certain, or else it's, and maybe you could then get them through the. Always, maybe, you know, what that means. Um, but if you don't have a place where you can. When you can say. Not flights. Just under this, kind of, piece.
So what is the motivation behind it?
Motivation.
Oh, but I mean, why?
There have been, there have been, there have been stories in the low, uh, in Boston neighborhood. That some.
Yeah.
Six second flight, that's all.
You have a six second flight tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Really?
Lucky gift.
It's gonna be really hot.
Northeast.
I'm sure there'll be a million reactions, right?
So far.
Motel.
Mr. Green, let's get started. And, uh, we have one more interview, so, uh, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, is applying to be on the, uh, override study committee. So.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I need to do is apologize. I don't know how, but somehow I had my mind that this was eight thirty and got here and realized that it was not. So I apologize, I know you go late enough and are busy enough that, uh, you know, I appreciate your giving me an opportunity nonetheless, so, thank you.
So tell us about yourself and what brings you to apply to the committee?
I would be happy to. So, um, I live at nineteen Copley Street. I've lived in Brookline, actually, it was surprising to me, but when I started writing this up, it's thirty seven years. Um, I know some of you already know this, but I have two children who graduated from devotion and Brookline High School. I'm a town meeting member in precinct eight. I'm on the board of Climate Action Brookline, member of the Green Caucus, a cert volunteer with the Brookline Police Department, and a teacher at the Heath School. So there's the bio portion. I've been teaching in Brookline for fifteen years, but most of my professional life has been in the private sector. When I first moved to the Boston area, I managed a retail store in the Prudential Center, and I've been a successful product manager for technology companies, creating and managing multimillion dollar portfolios. I think that I'll be able to provide a unique perspective to the committee as someone who has knowledge of the needs and the opportunities in the Brookline community and in the Brookline schools, as well as experience managing budgets and the necessary decisions that budgets require. So I think that, that one of the things that is important to me in applying for the job is bringing creativity to the process. I think that it's one thing to put numbers into a spreadsheet and crunch them. It's another thing to try to balance competing interests. I think that if you're gonna, um, be successful, that you have to be creative about it. So the last override study committee identified over six million dollars to catch up with past underfunding. And one of the things that's important to me is I think that catching up isn't really our best strategy. It's important, I think, to do our best to give voters a long-term view of what we anticipate. And yes, you know, the further out you go, the less you really know about what's coming along. But I think that it's easier to handle small surprises than big ones. And, um, probably no surprise to anybody here, but, um, Americans aren't at the top of the list in being good savers. And I think that, you know, one of the things that really would help is if people felt like, and, and again, this was something that the last override study committee raised as a question, not a, I don't believe that they weighed in on it, but, um, said that, you know, one of the things that the town of Brookline needs to look at is, are we better off with a lot of small overrides or just a few really big ones? And I think that people are really much more comfortable if they know they're gonna have smaller predictable amounts that they're gonna have to be responsible for than that they really don't know what's coming and, but when it gets there, it's gonna be big. So, you know, that's one of the things that I don't say I have all the answers to, but to me, it would be really important to work closely with town committees and commissions and groups that are looking at long-term planning, that are thinking about the future, that are doing things like encouraging hotels or micro units or things to, to help the town to become a little more predictable and a little more stable as we go forward. And I think that taking that into account, as well as looking at what's going on right now today and what we need in a year or two years, but to try to put in place some sort of a plan that says to the community, hey, here's what we think we're gonna be needing. People who have moved here have moved here because they really value what we have to offer. And I think that people, um, would appreciate the opportunity to, you know, I think people would be willing to pay for what they value here in Brookline, um, as is evidenced by the overrides that have been successful. I just think that it would be less stress on the community and I think actually a lot less stress on this board as well as, um, the town if we didn't have to sell big overrides. So, you know, that's, that's one of the, the main things on my mind right now. Budgets represent decisions, so, and priorities. It's not, you know, well, we have this much money, so when we run out, we're, we're done. You have to make decisions. Are we gonna spend money here? We're gonna spend money here. I think with the right combination of long-term care, planning and careful study, that this committee has an opportunity to establish the strong and predictable future that Brookline so desperately deserves and desires. As someone deeply committed to this community, I am in a unique position to balance my knowledge about the vital interests of schools with the financial needs of the realities of the town. And, um, you know, I think that, that the other thing that I'll say in concluding is that, when I looked at the towns around Brookline and towns that we tend to compare ourselves with, um, we've had less overrides. I think we've had three, if I'm not mistaken. But.
I think so, yeah, three.
Yeah. Wellesley's had twenty-three, Needham's had thirty. This was as of two thousand fourteen. I don't know if there've been any since then, but, so there are communities that are doing vastly more overrides. So I'm not saying that we should get into the race of trying to beat out thirty overrides by any means, but, you know, it might, I think, be a really good strategy to at least offer, hey, we could go this way or we could go this way. And so maybe instead of, last time we had, what was it, uh, five million dollar and a seven million dollar, so maybe this time it should be a, well, we could do X million dollars now and be good for a while, or we could go with a more modest amount and make it a more predictable. So, anyway, that's, that's what I am, uh, thinking about and why I'm here. And again, thank you for letting me, uh, make the mistake of getting here late.
Questions?
Um, I have worked with Bob in the past. I think on, I think we really worked together on the last override campaign, two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
Um, I know that you are a homeowner.
Yep.
Um, so you're a teacher, but you are also a homeowner. What kind of town services, um, have you seen in the past that you would like to see kind of maybe come back or even new services? Uh, should we have a robust discussion about balancing town services and the schools?
And, and when I talk about the, the decision-making, I think that the schools can be included in that. You know, I'm not, even though I teach, I'm not saying, oh, the schools get everything they want and then let's see what we've got left over. I mean, I think that there's room to look at both sides in terms of where to, where to make decisions and how to allocate. But, um, a couple of things come to mind right away. One of them is, um, open space and the parks that we have. And I think people who are attracted to Brookline, I know it's true for me, really value the fact that it's not living in Boston as close as we are to Boston on three sides. And part of that, I think, is that we've got neighborhood parks and we've got open space and, and it's not the same feeling. So I think, I think that's something to think about. I don't know whether that's a growth area, but maybe that's an area that we think about in terms of, and today's decision about Pine Manor maybe is a, is a, you know, an opportunity in that regard. So that's one thing. And I think, you know, I think another thing that I, um, you know, I don't know that it's, it's the same kind of a qualitative benefit for me as a resident, but I think that the balance of, um, of the makeup of the town is an opportunity. And I think, you know, we have so little business, um, certainly so little office space. I guess Brookline Place is probably our premier, um, um, office location. But I think that there's room there and to think about as we grow what, what that means and whether we can expand some of the commercial base that we've got going on. Boston is, you know, just dying for housing, you know, Boston's overcrowded. We're right here. I think for us to think that we're gonna stay exactly how we are and nothing's gonna change and Boston's gonna burst at the seams is an unrealistic point of view. So, you know, I think that there's room for us to grow in ways that preserve that open space and the quality of life that brings people to Brookline and at the same time, plan for a future that involves growth. So I, is that what you were asking about?
Yes.
In terms of, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Slackman Green.
Looking at your application form, my eyes are focused on a phrase, fiscally conservative budget. I always wonder what people mean by fiscally conservative, 'cause all budgets are sort of balancing acts. You know, values are in budgets. So in, in terms of how you're thinking about this in the context of the override study committee, how do you balance the various needs, both of the schools as well as the schools in the town? What's your sort of, you know, idea, big idea with respect to that? As a fiscally conservative.
Well, first of all, first of all, when you read that, I was like, oh, did I say that? Because I think that using, using, um, what's, you know, slogans or catchphrases like that, you know, doesn't necessarily say what is behind it, 'cause they get so used. But what I, what I was really thinking about was working in an environment where you need to understand limitations on a budget. And, um, actually, we, you know, this somewhat off the point, but, you know, I had a conversation with somebody today about time, you know, the time constraints in the school day. And I, you know, I, I started talking about it as a budget. You know, it's the same thing, you're budgeting time, not dollars, but you have so many hours, so many minutes. How do you divide them up? How are you gonna use them? And so I think that when I was talking about conservative, I was talking about it in the sense of, not that I'm not willing to, um, you know, I think that the town should spend money on the things that are important to it. I think that it's a matter of, what I was thinking about was the fact that you need to live within certain constraints. And so I think that's the conservatism as opposed to, oh, you know, people have credit cards and they don't have to necessarily live within their constraints, but towns do. So I think that's what I was thinking about. And I think the other part of your question was about how to handle it, was, um, which I think.
But budgets don't, are not conservative liberal, they're prudent or not.
They're what?
They're prudent or not.
Right.
So, you know, what, what is a prudent way of looking at, uh, some of these issues?
Well, you know, I would, I would maybe even argue that I don't know that they're prudent or not. I think that they're decisions. So, you know, if you're only gonna spend the money you have, which, you know, it's my understanding that that's, uh, we're required to do that, it's about a decision. So it's not, you know, is it a pru, you know, I, I think that most of the decisions that the town of Brookline's been making are prudent decisions. It's a question of, um, you know, within the schools, you know, do you spend money on curriculum? Do you spend money on technology? Do you spend money on classroom, uh, staff? Do you spend money, you know, where do you spend the money? And, you know, when you've used it up, then, you know, you have to come up with a budget that balances. What's coming in and what's going out need to be equal. And so, you know, I think it's the same thing with the town. You know, I'm not sure, when you say prudent, are you talking about you wanna know specific line items?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, a budget is not something that occurs in one moment. Something evolves over time. So, you know, January first, do we fix this roof that's leaking? Or do we put off that and spend money on something else? I mean, that's more the idea I was getting at.
Okay, so, I mean, certainly, you know, as a homeowner, if you have a roof that's leaking, you fix that. You know, do you add a porch? No, you know, maybe you do, maybe you don't. If you have the money, yes, maybe you do. You want a little space outside and you wanna be able to sit and have a barbecue. And I think it's the same for the town. You know, if there's snow plowing that needs to get done, we're gonna do it. You know, we're not gonna not do it. You know, are we, um, gonna replace, um, you know, the, you know, the ball fields with AstroTurf if we, you know, are tight on money? Well, maybe that's next year's project. So, I mean, I think some things are discretion, more discretionary and some things are less discretionary. And a leaking roof to me is not a discretionary item.
Slackman Heller.
So, um, Bob, what motivated you to become a teacher? Looks to me from your resume that you were in real estate and product managing, management, software, et cetera. And then you kinda did a one eighty and went to teaching.
So, um, the short version is that I was working for a startup company at the time. It was during the, um, dot com boom. And, uh, then there was a bust and they went out of business. And I had been through, um, I had been in technology for a while and I had turned down a lot of jobs to move to California. Things have sort of shifted again back east, but at the time that I was working in the business, it was more and more going to the West Coast. And I loved where I lived, I loved Brookline, I didn't wanna move. And so, you know, when the, when the dot com bust happened, you know, I, I realized that it was gonna be a little while. I was in marketing as a product manager. And the typical scenario for marketing people is you do sales until the economy turns around and then you go back to marketing, 'cause people are always willing to pay salespeople on commission. And, um, and I said, you know, this one's gonna last a while and I really don't feel like doing this every few years. And I really had no idea what I wanted to do, but there were a couple of things that were really important to me. One was that I felt, as wonderfully as I got along with the people that I worked with and, um, as, as well as I got along with the people that I worked for, I felt like at the end of the day, there wasn't really much coming back other than a paycheck. So I would feel good about the products that I managed and I felt good when they were successful, which they were, but I felt like I was doing more and more, um, nonprofit work and volunteer work. And now that I look back on it, I think that's sort of built into me and I didn't realize it at the time. But, but I, I said, I wanted to work at a, in an industry that I felt like I was giving something besides generating dollars. So that was one. And then the other was that I'm pretty monogamous by nature and I loved working at companies that I was at and got along really well with the people. And it was hard for me to make those transitions. So I was looking for a career that was both, um, more satisfying in terms of the contribution I was making and was more stable. And I spent, I had no idea what I was gonna do. I spent a summer going with a great career counselor who I found in Belmont. And at the end of the summer, I had three things that I was deciding between and teaching was one of them and I picked it, so. And it's been a great, it's been a great, um, move for me.
Interesting.
Okay.
Okay. One last question, um, and this isn't meant to be controversial.
Okay.
But as a.
I'll try to keep it that way.
Teacher, um, how has your experience been communicating with the administration? Especially like during the two thousand fourteen override? I know that you, you know, helped out on that campaign. From a teacher's perspective and a resident of Brookline for so long, do you think that, uh, the information that we get for this kind of override study committee is reflective of, you know, the people that are actually in the classrooms?
Is, so the last part was, is the information that the override study committee is getting reflective of the classrooms? Was that the last part?
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that there's no disconnect between like the teachers and the administration and then the override study committee, what we're given for, uh, numbers and figures. I didn't know, from your perspective, if you've felt like in the past, there's been a disconnect or if you, uh, feel like there hasn't been a disconnect?
Yes and no. I feel like, um, one of the things that's been really impressive for me in making a career change, because my kids were in fifth grade and seventh grade when I started teaching. So I had been a, a Brookline parent well before I was a Brookline teacher. And I always really thought that the teachers here were really great, but when I started teaching, I had a whole new respect for how good they were. And the people that I work with are really phenomenal. And that goes for not just the teachers, but the administrators. You know, I have, I've had some great administ- You know, I have, I've had some great administrators and I feel like there's a lot of talent that Brookline has and a lot of really wonderful people that Brookline has. I think that the thing that has not been working as well has been not communicating as well as we should have. And I include, I think within the building, it's not such a, such a problem, but I think from building to building and from building to town hall, it's not as good as it could be. And, you know, it's something that I'm really working on and I'm, I'm very active in the union, I'm the vice president of the Brookline Educators Union. And this is something that I've talked to Andrew Bott about, and this is something that I've talked to Jessica Wender Schubow about. And, you know, my, my feeling about it is that none of us succeed unless we all succeed. That he's not going to be successful if the teachers and the schools aren't successful and the teachers and the schools aren't going to succeed and grow if he's not successful. And to me, the only way that happens is by communicating. You know, if there's something that we don't like or is not looking good or we think is a problem, we need to say something about it, not just keep it to ourselves and then, you know, be angry about it. And I think the same is true from the other direction. It doesn't mean that there's, everything is always transparent 100%, but I think that that's the foundation on which we build the success of the school system. And I don't think we're there yet, but I, I think we can be. I mean, I think Andrew's a good listener and, you know, I'm, I'm very optimistic.
Excellent, thank you.
I think we need to move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, thank you, I'm really sorry to add to your agenda.
Okay. So we have some warrant article reviews and public hearings. So first, we have the warrant articles from the Senior Tax Policy Committee headed by Selectman Franco. So the first one is Article Six. Who's going to, someone want to talk about it? Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, nice, nice to see you all. So I'll, I'll speak in my presentation, my prepared remarks on six, seven, eight, and then we can discuss them in whatever order you might like. So I'm Neil Gordon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, member of the Advisory Committee, member of the Selectments Committee on Senior Tax Policy, speaking for the Selectments Committee and not applying to the override study committee. We all, we all know that living in Brookline is expensive and that real estate taxes will soon be subject to increases from upcoming overrides and debt exclusion. Brookline seniors living on fixed and often limited incomes are especially and increasingly vulnerable to economic forces, including overrides and debt exclusions. Accordingly, a year ago, Town Meeting adopted a resolution sponsored by Susan Granoff urging the Board of Selectmen to establish a committee to study property tax relief programs for senior homeowners with modest incomes. The Committee on Senior Tax Policy chaired by Selectman Franco was formed shortly thereafter. The Selectmen charged the Senior Tax Policy Committee with making policy recommendations and proposing warrant articles, both for new programs and for improvements to existing programs. I speak this evening in support of three warrant articles that were filed as a result of the committee's work. The committee's final report, which contains additional recommendations, is being finalized and will be filed in advance of Town Meeting. Articles Six and Seven relate to an existing Brookline real estate tax deferral program that under Massachusetts law allows qualifying seniors to defer the payment of their real estate taxes until they pass away or sell their homes. To be clear, this is a tax deferral program, there's no tax abatement, and interest is charged on any taxes deferred. The cost to the town of administrating the program is and will, even with the increased participation that we wish to encourage, remain nominal. First Article Six. Article Six asks the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature to increase the income qualification gap from currently $57,000 to $86,000 by changing the reference in state law from the circuit breaker cap for single taxpayers to the circuit breaker cap for married taxpayers filing jointly as it applies to Brookline. So a home rule petition. These amounts are adjusted by the state annually for inflation. Favorable action on Article Six would allow the town to pursue an action that would expand the number of seniors eligible to participate in the deferral program and, given the high housing costs in Brookline, put in place an income ceiling that better corresponds to our local need. Separately, Article Seven proposes a change in the interest rate for seniors participating in the tax deferral program. Currently participating seniors are charged interest at a fixed 5% rate on tax payments they defer. I'll note that the payment of interest is also deferred, no real estate tax or interest payments are made until the participant passes away or they sell their home. That would be the last participating survivor. Article Seven proposes changing the fixed 5% rate to a variable rate based on the 10-year United States Treasury bond yield, a rate that's currently about 2.2%. The rate would be adjusted annually for new deferrals. Favorable action on Article Seven would, at the current reference rate, reduce the cost of participation to senior ta, in the senior tax deferral program to one that the committee feels is fair to both the town and to participating seniors. Changes in the interest rate would roughly correspond to changes in the town's long-term borrowing rate over time, again, something the committee feels is fair to both the town and to participating seniors. The rate, although variable, would be capped under state law at 8%. And lastly, Article Eight. The committee proposed adopting a program also defined by state law to fund tax relief aid to both qualifying seniors and, because it's included in the state law, those with disabilities. Favorable action on Article Eight would provide a voluntary supplemental payment through a tax bill checkoff. Funds would be, funds raised would be administered by a taxation aid committee as provided in the statute. The taxation aid committee would be charged with establishing eligibility criteria and allocating any funds raised. As with the senior tax deferral program, there would be no tax abatement, no shifting of tax burden to other taxpayers other than voluntarily, and the cost of the town is expected to be nominal. On behalf of the Selectments Committee on Senior Tax Policy, I encourage your recommendation of favorable action on Articles Six, Seven, and Eight.
So Six, Six is a home rule petition to raise the income limit?
Correct. From the current ceiling up to a higher ceiling. And the, the current ceiling is based on a statewide average. I think apropos of the conversation we just had about override study committee, this is a more expensive community to live in than some others. And simply trying to get that income ceiling to better match the realistic cost of living in Brookline.
Good idea.
Yeah.
What's our definition of senior in Brookline? What, what age is the mechanism?
It's in the statute.
The state definition, I believe, is 55. Is that correct, Neil?
I don't know specifically, I don't remember.
I don't think the circuit breaker is that low.
Yeah, I think circuit breaker is 65.
65.
Okay. But you're absolutely right, this isn't a, it's not a Brookline-specific definition. This is a program that's provided for in state law and the legislature is the one that gets to determine who's a senior and who's not.
Okay.
Yeah, these are, in my mind, pretty straightforward.
Do we have an advisory committee, do we have an advisory committee recommendation?
The advisory committee recommends favorable action on all three articles.
Unchanged?
Unchanged.
Oh my goodness. They didn't wordsmith a single thing?
The, the box to check, do we currently have that? Do other communities have that? And do they just kind of say how much money they want to include?
Yes. It's a very prescriptive procedure in the state law.
So the city of Newton has it right now. I think that's the probably closest neighboring community.
And how much do they usually get in a year? 1,200?
It's not a tremendous sum of money, but, but as Mr. Gordon has said in the past, when you're having trouble paying your property tax bill, $100 or $200 is a meaningful, a meaningful contribution and, at the very least, a demonstration that the community feels your pain. But I think in addition to setting up or allowing us to put this checkbox on the, on the tax bill, it would also set up a committee. And I think there's an interesting conversation to be had at the committee level about what the ask looks like. Is it, you know, check to contribute $1? Is it, you know, check to contribute $100? You know, there's some, it's going to be an interesting marketing effort in addition to a review of what we can actually do under state law.
This is a public hearing. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Caro. Are you for this?
I'm Frank Carroll, I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct 10. And I'm, I'm, among other, other things, I'm the Chair of the Brookline Can Livable Community Advocacy Committee. I was also a member of the, of the committee that, that produced these, these recommendations. And I'm, and first of all, I'll start by saying that the Livable Community Advocacy Committee unanimously supports all of these warrant articles and, you know, strongly urges favorable action. I'd just, you know, kind of like to add a word about it in saying that, that these, these recommendations represent a very modest step forward. I mean, they're, you know, very welcome and kind of really, you know, it's important for Town, Town Meeting to pass them. But, but they are very modest steps.
I agree.
What's attractive about this is that this is an approach doesn't, that does not get into the complicated questions about shifting the burden from one group to, to another. You know, it really kind of starts out with the idea that at least in concept, the, the tax deferral program is attractive. It, you know, it kind of, you know, what it's kind of, it says, says to people, if you've been living here in Brookline for a while and, you know, you own property, you, you've had some appreciation and property value. And, and what it's, does kind of, the participation in the deferral program does, it really allows that appreciation and property value to, to, to help you in paying the taxes. One of the members of our committee, Harold Peterson, who is a professor of economics at Boston College, did some very interesting analysis showing us that, that, that people who participated in, in the program, you know, assuming that, you know, looking kind of historically at the way property values have increased in Brookline, people could, older people who qualify for the program could, could participate in it, pay, pay no real estate taxes and experience no loss in, in the overall value of their homes. It's, you know, what, what they're paying for, paying for it is with the, the appreciation and value that we get in, you know, in, in living in Brookline. So that's, I mean, that's why it's so attractive to try to get more people to participate in, in the deferral program. And the puzzle is that there are so, so very few. So the emphasis here is on trying to maximize the participation in the tax deferral program. It's something that we need to try. And clearly limitations to it, we're going to have to do, do some other things in the future, but this is a valuable first step.
Okay. Did we notice this for a vote? Yes, we did. So do we feel comfortable voting?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will move a favorable action recommendation for the three articles, just do them all in one vote. All those in favor of a favorable action recommendation, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. A little quicker than the advisory committee.
Not a five or four either.
Yeah. I presume their vote was pretty unanimous or no? What was it? Out of curiosity.
You're just extrapolating if there were no changes, it couldn't be much discussion, right?
No, I know, I've hung around the advisory committee too much to make that assumption.
Well, Mr. Gordon gets the, the specific numbers, I can say that there was broad-based support for Articles Six and Seven. Article Eight, which is the, the checkbox article, was a little bit more close.
Really?
Yeah.
But it's voluntary.
There was a sense amongst members of the advisory committee that A, it wasn't going to raise a meaningful sum of money.
That may, may not be true.
So was it sort of worth it or not?
But it's not going to cost anything.
And two, does it go far enough? So.
Well, we can argue about that.
Article Six, the home rule petition, 19 in favor, zero opposed, three abstaining. Article Seven, 14 in favor, five opposed, three abstaining. Article Eight, 10 in favor, eight opposed, four abstaining.
Wow, okay.
Selectman Franco says Article Eight was thought to be not worth the effort for the nominal amount. And my response, my exact quote was, or maybe an additional quote, a nickel's a lot of money when you don't have one.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So moving on to Article Nine, which is a little different. And Article Nine would have us petitioning the legislature to grant us the ability to issue some more liquor licenses. So who's going to speak to that?
I guess I will take it. Let me go to the podium.
Boy, Selectman Franco, you've been busy.
I apologize, I was a little bit asleep at the switch. I thought I'd have somebody else helping me out, but, but I think I can navigate my way through this. So as this board knows, we are short on, on liquor licenses in, in Brookline. There are, I believe, six different categories of liquor licenses that we can issue. There are common victor's licenses, which are the typical licenses we give to, to restaurants and those, and bars, and those come in two flavors, an all kinds and a wine and malt beverage license. There are package store licenses, you know, sort of self-explanatory, the, the liquor store licenses. And again, those come in two varieties, malt and wine, and then all kinds. And then there's two types of licenses which we, as a board, see less frequently, in holder and club licenses. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, I apologize, but we are short in a couple of those categories. And this article is an attempt to, to re-up, to get a larger quota of licenses in the on-premises, the CV license categories. And this article is drafted to, to give two different types of licenses, or two different categories of licenses, all of which would be geographically restricted. So the first set of maps that you'll see behind the text of the article itself refers to specific parcels in town. And these parcels were arrived at by taking a look at the housing production plan, at economic development projects which have been approved or, or in the pipeline. So here I'm thinking about the Cleveland Circle Hotel project or the River Road project that, that we dealt with about a year ago, or the Waldo Dugan project, which is currently in, in committee, or the Holiday Inn project, another project that's being studied. And then there's, map four here is a, is a parcel out in, in South Brookline, right on the Newton border along Boilson Street, that there's been some conversations about redevelopment. border along Boylston Street, that there's been some conversations about redevelopment in the out years. So this first sort of group of licenses are parcels where there is a identified need for a liquor license, or where we project a license to be needed potentially in the future. Again, these licenses are restricted based on tax parcel and would not be transferable. So let's just take the Cleveland Circle licenses as an example.
Is that map one?
That is map one, exactly. So we could issue a liquor license to an establishment that opened at Cleveland Circle, but unlike our current quota of licenses, we couldn't take that license and issue it to a business in Washington Square, Putterham Circle, or Coolidge Corner. It's got to stay at that address. And to the extent that there isn't an applicant there, the license doesn't get issued.
Do we have any such licenses today that are restricted by address?
We do not.
So this is a new animal.
A new animal for Brookline.
Do other communities have that?
Yes. This is the way that the state legislature currently prefers to issue these additional licenses. I should maybe back up a step and say that the number of liquor licenses a community has, the quota, is set by state law. And there is, in the interest of full disclosure, one community in the state, as I understand it, that does not have, is not subject to the quota, and that dates back to the 1920s, the end of prohibition. There was one community that did not accept a chapter of state law and has a seemingly unlimited number of licenses.
And who is that?
It is a community on the other side of the Charles River. Begins with a C, ends in an E, home of two major universities, and has a lot of economic development going on. So that, and that quota of licenses.
So cryptic. Can't figure it out.
That quota of licenses, I believe, adjusts every 10 years based on population. So what we have today may change in the future, based on the census. So that's the first sort of group of licenses that would be obtained, should we go to the legislature and they approve this legislation. The second group of licenses, and let me flip the page and get the map number, the licenses referred to in, what's page 14 and 15 in our packet, are what are referred to as economic development opportunity areas. And those are licenses where we, as a community, based, my understanding is primarily on the housing production plan, have said, hey, there's some opportunity for development to occur here, and we just want to be ready should a project come forward that isn't handled by the first, what is it, the first five maps in the article. I should make quite clear here that some of these licenses are prospective. We're anticipating that there may be projects advanced here. To the extent that a project doesn't materialize, or a project materializes that doesn't need a liquor license, we are under no obligation to issue the liquor license. And similarly, if a project does materialize, there's an applicant that comes before the board, the normal licensing procedure would take place, and we, the board of selectmen or a future board of selectmen, have the discretion to issue the license or not issue it, and attach any conditions we deem appropriate. Particularly on the development opportunity area map, you will note that there are some, if you get down to specific addresses, there are some funny things that go on. So you'll see some areas that are shaded in gray that aren't zoned currently for commercial. I think somebody last night at a hearing pointed out that their home in a historic district is zoned, is on the map as a shaded in area. This is an imprecise map. And of course, to the earlier point I made, that the board has discretion, should we get this, these 40 licenses, on where to issue a license and to whom. So I would encourage all of us not to get caught up in the details here. We're simply trying to get a quota of licenses to allow for things to happen in the future. We're not saying that a license has to be issued to a particular address, a particular business, or in a particular area.
Right. And of course, the underlying zoning would take effect, so if an area is zoned completely residential, it would be a prohibited use.
Yep. As I described last night, this is trying to set the table for good things to happen in the future. One of the problems that every community has in the state, all 361 of them, is that you can only go back to the legislature every so often for additional set of licenses, and that waiting period in between is typically over a decade. So again, to underscore the fact that we're trying to be forward-looking here and not wait for a particular project to materialize, and a need to arise for a liquor license before going to the legislature, petitioning them, and trying to get that supply of licenses. Just to be quite clear about what this article did, because I think I glossed over it, we're looking for 35 all kinds licenses and five wine and malt licenses, of course, divided between those two categories that I laid out, the ones that are based on specific addresses, and then the second set looking sort of at development opportunity areas.
I think it's, the zoning point is an important one, that we should make sure that it's in the write-up. And when, I'm presuming, Selectman Franco is going to be speaking to this at town meeting.
He's the one who understands it.
Yeah. I think, yeah, because I think, you know, if you look at the development areas, you know, in map 6A and 6B, and then 6C, it's like, okay, the whole town. So then you look at the map and say, well, you know, look at all these little residential streets. Is a bar going to be opening up on the residential streets? And the answer is no. They'll open the commercial areas just the same way that they're opening commercial areas now. So this is just allowing us to expand the licenses, and then we, as a board, tend to be very careful, and we obtain community feedback as to what kinds of conditions, and we do stings, and, you know, we take our licensing and enforcement as a town, as a board, very, very seriously.
And we listen to communities, you know. When a butters come and testify before us and say, these hours aren't appropriate, or we don't think this setup for a business is appropriate, I at least take it very seriously. And based on my, you know, over three years on the board, I think the board in general takes those comments seriously, and weighs them very carefully when making a decision as to whether to issue a license and what conditions to attach to it.
I would make one suggestion, which is that on these maps that you identify precinct or, you know, area, or so that, you know, I can see myself kind of looking a little tiny righty.
Trying to figure out which part of Brookline it is.
Yeah.
So I think that's a great suggestion. If it would be helpful, I can tick through the first five or six maps and tell you exactly where they're referring to.
Well, I think I've figured it out.
Okay.
Squinting and looking at the Cleveland Circle, and then River Road, and one Brookline, the Brookline Place Development.
Yep.
Right?
And Coolidge Corner.
So map three is the Waldo Durgan Garage, right in Coolidge Corner. Map four is out in South Brookline at the.
Chestnut Hill.
Chestnut Hill. Thank you very much. Right by Hollywood Cemetery, out by the street. Map five refers to the, what is now the Holiday Inn on Beacon Street. And then we get to these development opportunity maps, 6A, 6B, and 6C.
And so those, for instance, map 6A, the border is on the left, it's Harvard Street, and then it morphs into Commonwealth Avenue. Oh, no, maybe that's all Commonwealth, I'm sorry. And so that's all, a lot of that is already commercial.
Most of it is, yeah.
Yeah. So I think the quality of this map is not great. I think we can get a better map for the board to take a look at and have a better understanding. I will simply, I'll simply say that it's based on the housing production plan and a robust public process that took place.
This is a, what?
Oh, I have a couple of questions. One, how do we become exempt like Cambridge?
We don't.
So this is a question for the experts in town. I will sort of soft shoe my way through the answer and say, I don't believe that that opportunity exists any longer. It was something that was available now almost 100 years ago, and we missed the boat, as did 350 other cities and towns in Massachusetts.
Bummer. Okay. Then my second question is, do we have any club licenses in town?
We do. I believe there is one club license issued to the VFW. And the club licenses, there is no quota. It's seemingly, you know, you can issue as many as you like, but there are certain businesses that qualify for it. So if you've got 100 VFW posts, then you can issue 100 licenses, but you can't take a club license and issue it to a regular bar or restaurant.
So to me, club means like boomchka, boomchka, boom. No?
That's not how it's referred to. It's like a bedrin or.
Fraternal organization.
The Shuns of Italy.
Man, I thought that I'd have a new place to go to on Saturday nights.
VFW halls open. If you're a bedrin, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, you know, it's notice for a vote. We can, oh, it's a public hearing. Any member of the public wish to speak? I see none.
I will anticipate the next question. What has the advisory committee done? The full committee has not taken it up. The subcommittee met last night and adjourned without taking a vote.
And they were getting into the weeds, and should there be a license here and not there? So we can take the bull by the horns and try to lead the advisory committee in a direction and take a vote if we like what this is, or we can wait, or we can digest.
Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't think we do.
I think we should take a vote. I think that select person Franco is.
That's going to be tough.
Governor.
Point about, I told you I like Poobah, about looking forward and designating areas in town where we are, you know, we suspect the growth will happen, might not, we don't have to issue the licenses. It's completely up to us at that time, so depending upon the conditions. So I think, based on that, I think we should go ahead and vote on this, and, you know, I would just devote favorable action.
And I hasten to add that the licensing review committee, which Selectman Green and I co-chair, took a look at this before the warrant article filing deadline, and was okay with the direction. The committee hasn't come together and offered a formal recommendation, but they did have the opportunity to fly specked it and issue some comments about general direction, appropriate and inappropriate, and was okay with the filing, and here we are today.
I'm okay to vote. If, we can always. We can always reconsider, and we are, we as a board are the board proposing this, so I think it's okay for us to try and lead by example.
If we don't support it, who will?
Right. I think we, as a board, take the issuances of licenses very seriously and won't do so lightly, and we should signal that. You know, having the additional licenses will give us, you know, an opportunity to have a more vibrant community. So, I will move a recommendation of favorable action on the warrant article nine as written. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have one more, well, we have appointments, so I'll turn it over to Town Administrator Claytoner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three commission, board and commissions that are ready for appointment this evening. The first is the building commission. We have one expiring term. The incumbent, Ms. Bezloski, is interested in reappointment, and there are no other applicants, so I will put Karen Bezloski's name out for the board's vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, on the planning board, we are looking this evening to make two appointments. There are three available slots, although we haven't interviewed an incumbent yet, so we thought, given the need for the planning board to fill up their ranks as we head towards town meeting, it would be important. So we're going to take two, you're going to vote for two, and there is one incumbent, but I am going to list the incumbent's name first, and then I'm going to list the others that are on the list, who are in this phase of interviews. We interviewed three people long ago.
Could you give us the names?
I'm going to, I'm going to name Mark Zerillo's name, Catherine Link, Carlos Ridweho, and James Carr, and we have to vote for two. So I will call the names. Mark J. Zerillo.
Aye.
Aye.
Catherine Link. Carlos Ridweho. James Carr.
Aye.
Okay. So then Mr. Carr and Mr. Zerillo will be members for the next three years, three year term. And then finally, we have the building, I mean, excuse me, the zoning board of appeals. And in this case, we have two vacancies, but we haven't, and only incumbents are interested in reappointment at this point in time. We haven't interviewed one of the incumbents, so we're just going to reappoint one member, and that is actually.
And we're moving them up to.
Yeah, actually, the vacancy is on the full members. You may be aware that on the zoning board of appeals, there are three full members, and then several associate members. There really is no difference in the role of those people. They fill in when needed, so, but in this case, we think Mark Zoroff, who is up for reappointment as an associate member, would be appropriate to move up. So I will call Mark Zoroff.
Aye.
Aye.
For a permanent member, for a term for three years. Thank you.
Okay. And I think that concludes our business for tonight.